All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Friday, March 20th, 2020 meeting of the Fairhaven School Committee. We are being filmed for public access and we are also live via Zoom meeting that people have dialed into. I'll explain how the meeting is going to run after we do the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone. Like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Fairhaven School Committee. The way this meeting is going to work, we have sent out an agenda. Generally speaking, at the beginning of the meeting, we generally have public comments. We are going to allow public comments. We are going to allow questions. However, as the Chair, I'm moving that part of the agenda to the end of the meeting. The goal of this meeting... Sorry, I'm admitting people into the meeting here as we go. The goal of this meeting is to provide information on what's happened to date and what is coming in the future, the plans that have been executed by our administration, and to just answer as many questions as possible. So the reason why I'm going to hold public comments to the end is because it's my hope that most of your questions will be answered during the course of the meeting itself. But again, like I said, when we get to the end of the meeting, I'm going to allow...I will enable people's audio so they can speak. Right now, we cannot hear you, and we'll be able to hear you when I allow you to...when I unmute you. What I will do is I will say your number, your...the last four digits of your phone number, so I'll be paying attention because I don't know who you are. All I can see is phone numbers. And at that point, you'll be allowed to speak, and I'll give each speaker no more than two minutes, just so I can allow as many people as we need to. We'll see how it goes. This is uncharted territory, so I ask for your patience during this time. And so, we...I know, asking Dr. Baldwin, who's with us, basically, we are adhering to social distancing during this meeting, so we are all six feet apart. We do have all six school committee members here, and I'll take a roll call in a second. So let's do that. Mr. Boye.
Here.
Mrs. Powless.
Here.
Mrs. Keachler.
Here.
Mrs. McKenna.
Here.
Mr. Beach.
Here.
And I am here. We have Dr. Baldwin, our superintendent of schools here, Tara Kohler, our assistant superintendent of schools, Nicole Potter, who's our director of information technology and finance, and we also have assistants here from Fairhaven Cable Access and Fairhaven TV. So they're here to enable us to have this meeting and to provide the access remotely. So we are not approving any minutes, although it was on the agenda. They did not come out as normal, obviously, like I said, since we've had this unprecedented situation go on. We're going to save that for our next meeting, so I am going to pass over that portion of the agenda. And as I already said, we're going to move public comment to the end of the meeting. So with that, I think we'll go to reports and recommendations of the superintendent, and Dr. Baldwin, I'll let you take me.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just appreciate the community's patience in this unprecedented time. It's been a week. One week ago, an hour ago, we brought our principals in after receiving a lot of information. And I'm going to go through the timeline for the week and within that. Every time there's information that comes up, you'll get that information through the timeline. One week ago, on Friday, March 13th, at 10:00 a.m., there was a conference call with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Public Health. When we got out of that conference call, the DESI correspondence for the coronavirus guidance stated in bold, "At this time, the administration is not asking for a statewide closure, but that could change in the future as circumstances change." That was at noon one week ago. What happened from that point on is superintendents across the Commonwealth, and it had happened the night before with many Metro West superintendents who had been parts of the Biogen situation, started to close schools by region. And what was happening was North Shore Superintendents Association were coming together and deciding to close schools collectively for the safety of their staff and students in the community. The exact same thing was happening with the Old Colony Superintendents Association, which ranges in region from Seaconk through Provincetown. And there are about 40 superintendents along many, many communities, and by the afternoon, 24 superintendents had decided from the Old Colony Superintendents Association to do the right thing and either close for one week or two weeks. We had made a decision, as I said, almost to the hour one week ago, that we would close schools for one week, and we would reevaluate today, March 20th. What happened was, we put out correspondence. We informed everyone to treat this week as a snow day week, except for the Friday, because we had only called one school cancellation. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday would get us to our five allotted snow days, and then we would figure out how to deal with the Friday. What then happened was, all day on Sunday, March 15th, many, many phone conversations took place at the state level because, basically, most if not all of the districts around the Commonwealth had decided to close. And for all the right reasons, at that time, Governor Baker got on and decided to suspend educational operations from March 17th until April 7th. Basically, what he was doing was saying from Tuesday to Tuesday, March 17th to Tuesday through April 7th to Tuesday, for three weeks, the governor of the Commonwealth was going to suspend all school districts in the Commonwealth. So on Sunday, March 15th, we sent out a correspondence to faculty and staff. We were already closed with our parents and our school community, so we knew we did not have to rush on that one. They already knew we weren't having school on Monday. But as has been the case throughout this entire process, our goal has been and will always be the safety of our students, faculty, and staff in our community, and we will not divert from that goal one iota. And what we knew we had to do was if we were closing on the Monday and faculty and staff were realizing that they might be out for a while, we know how dedicated they are, and we needed to send a directive that, for all the right reasons and their safety, our buildings would be alarmed and no one would be allowed in the buildings till, at a minimum, Tuesday. There was science, and we told them that, there was science based on that, that any known virus that is on a tabletop or in a building, and at that point, and as at this point today, there are no known cases in the town of Fairhaven. However, we wanted to play it safe, is that we wanted our building from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday into Tuesday to have no one, not one human being, in the building. So we sent a directive to the faculty and staff that the buildings were alarmed, and we would start to reopen the buildings again on Tuesday, in which our custodial staff would be the only individuals allowed in the building, and that would be for the purposes of a deep clean. So we're not talking weeks ago, and yet, in time, it feels that way. We're talking Tuesday of this week. We're talking Sunday night when we gave that directive to our faculty and staff. On Monday, March 16th, there was an all-call and an email to families and guardians because, even though the superintendent of schools had called on a Friday to say we were out until the 20th, we did get a few calls to the administrative center, and I will give you the rundown of what we decided to do at that point in time in our building, is that we were getting some calls of confusion, and the confusion was that the governor had canceled for three weeks, but the superintendent had only officially canceled for one week. I believe that the governor trumps anything that I have to say and would supersede anything that the superintendent would say, but again, to ely any confusion, we did put an all-call out at 8:45 with a corresponding email to the school community Monday morning to state that we would as well be out for the three-week period. Now, I just want to, confusion-wise, I believe the three-week period that the governor stated was then pushed back to April 6th, but remember, at the time, he stated three weeks, Tuesday to Tuesday. But right now, we would be planning on coming back to school on April 6th, and I will also talk about that as we move a little bit further. At 9 o'clock, I was asked to go to a meeting with the town of Fairhaven and their emergency team to discuss if there were any cases in our community, how we were all dealing with this. So in the banquet room of Town Hall, all department heads, police chief, fire chief, health agent, myself, the town administrator, and others convened a meeting and had a discussion on what we were all doing. At that time, I explained, our office on 128 Washington Street really allows social distancing to take place. It's an office in which we each have a cordoned off office area, and while we might congregate around a coffee machine or whatever it may be, I gave our employees the opportunity to, if they had to work remotely from home, they could, but if they...as long as they stayed in their space and as long as they kept their social distance, our building would be open. However, we would not be accepting any visitors, again, to keep the community and our employees safe, but only by appointment. And I think our first appointment that took place was today at 2:30 for the week. But we have been in, we've been doing our work this week, but we have absolutely been practicing social distancing and getting a lot done. So at 10:00 a.m., there was a conference call with the Commissioner of Education. He has been completely hands-on. He has been having phone conversations with all superintendents, giving them updates from the state level, and even better than that, receiving input from school superintendents about what's happening and what's going on. And then, at 2:00 p.m. on that Monday, and this is an access that individuals have right now, we conducted our first Zoom meeting with our executive leadership team. Our executive leadership team is the four individuals in the administrative center, three of which are here at this meeting, Mrs. Diane Sullivan, our Director of Student Services, and our four building principals. So those eight individuals got on a Zoom meeting on Monday at 2:00 p.m., and basically, we started to talk about something that I'm going to go deeper into, and then Mrs. Kohler will go very deep into from here. I can tell you that sleep, and it doesn't matter, it's pretty cool in a way, that sleep is not an issue right now, because you're so hooked up on what you can do next and what you have to do, you don't feel like it. And what's happening was, Sunday night, I can tell you that all of our minds were going, and I couldn't wait for the day to start on Monday so we could get some plans going. When Monday began, we started to talk about resources and enhancement activities. In case we were out the full three weeks, which we knew we were, what could we do? What could we plan? And the other thing that we had going for us is that we knew that we had those four snow days, that no matter what, the first four days of the week were snow days. And they weren't snow days, but they were school cancellation days, and what we've learned through the years is we've had school cancellation days for a gambit of reasons, not just weather, and this is another new reason. So we knew we had some time, so in using that time, we started to put our brains together, and that might, you know, be scary, but we did, and it was very interesting. And we unleashed the ideas with our leadership team at 2:00 p.m. on that Monday. What we said was, we've been in constant contact with the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education and wanted to let everybody know that DESI was creating statewide plans in terms of educational resources. And I think Mrs. Kohler will talk deeper into this. This is a crisis. People are nervous. People have anxiety. People are uncertain. We certainly didn't want, well-intended, 40 different educators bombarding parents with a plethora of lessons for their students, day one, day two. Remember, the first four days were snow days. So what we decided was, let's follow the state's lead. The next thing we learned was, the state was partnering with WGBH in Boston, and that's Channel 2. That's what I think of anyone who's had children, they know that that's where many of the shows that we've watched through the years are on. And WGBH in Boston, within a day or two, and remember, this is Monday morning, they were going to put together programming that not only would be on television, but could be online resources for all grade spans. And this would be coordinated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So it wouldn't be that each system or each teacher was going rogue with what they were trying to do, that there would be consistency from the Commonwealth and their level, and it could be disseminated through WGBH, Channel 2. Even for those who don't have connectivity, they could go on TV. And we have that information today and actually got that out to our parents. So with that partnership, they also were looking into L students in the L population and looking at ways of closed captioning, looking at ways of Telemundo and Univision, a lot of deep thought into how all could mean all throughout the Commonwealth. DESI will be producing a letter that they will share with families as soon as it is released, and we will forward that. It has not come down from them yet, but we anticipate it at any time. So it was our objective to be supportive and to get resources to supplement students during this extraordinary and challenging situation, but we were not intending, and we will not intend, to replace the normal school day. Nothing replaces the brick and mortar, the face-to-face, the relationship building that takes place in our schools, but could we set up something to enhance, to support resources for students and families? That was our objective, and that continues to be our objective, and that was set forth in our thoughts on Sunday night and starting to put it into action on Monday, and then starting to talk to our principals on Monday afternoon. Our specific plan was to do what we could, as best as we possibly could. And what we thought was, let's break this up into units and chunks. Let's not do it so specific and so small. So the idea was to have K through 2 literacy, which has been a huge initiative of ours, and to have two lead people head that, and then those two lead-head people would then converse with others. And we thought about chunking up 3 to 5 ELA and 3 to 5 math. We talked about chunking up 6 to 8 math, 9 to 12 math, 6 to 12 humanities, which is ELA and social studies, 6 to 12 science, and then, as we started to think more, there's so much more we can do with our exploratories, et cetera. So we were going...we knew we had those four days, and the idea was to start to unleash our faculty and staff, because it was going to go beyond those four days, and to take those days to plan what we were going to do. Tuesday, March 17th, we began with...I began with a...I have a really interesting role right now. In May, I'll be the president of the Mass Association of School Superintendents. That affords me the ability to be in the room where it happens, so to speak, and have input, also hear what's going on, and I think it's been a plus in this situation, because we've been able to give input from a perspective of a South Coast suburban school district to certain individuals at the state level. While a Weston may be able to do a full-fledged online program like a university, I said, I cannot guarantee that all 2,000 of our students have connectivity, have access, and have the ability to go online to do learning, nor in a time like this would I want that to happen right away. So giving the perspective of reality of our district was important. So at 10 o'clock on Tuesday morning, I was in a conference call with the education chairs, Alice Peisch and Jason Lewis, providing input and trying to set forth some information that you'll be dealing with later. And then at 12 o'clock, I was on a conference call with the Mass Association of School Superintendent Officers with the Commissioner of Education, again, trying to vet what the right thing and the best thing to do is. And by 2:00 p.m., we were having another Zoom meeting with our executive leadership team, and we kept feeding them with information of where we were heading. The information we gave them and then got out, and I think we sent a narrative that said, on Friday, we'd get back to people, because that's what we knew as of last Friday, and this is the Friday we'd get back to people. We had to keep communicating deeper and further. So what we did was, sent something to faculty and staff. On Tuesday, March 17th, we discussed the calendar, and so this is, as I get to these points in this narrative, I want to stop so everyone understands what I'm talking about with the calendar. The Commissioner of Education set forth regulation when the governor declared a state of emergency that allowed him to change regulation. We have to fulfill 180 days. And the initial language said that any days after April 1st or before April 1st would all have to be made up, no matter what, with an ending date of June 30th. What the Commissioner did, based on the governor's decree, was went back and said by March 15th...by moving it to March 15th, it set a clear end date to the school year. Your 185th day, and we're all different when our days were, how many days we had taken, would set a final date, no matter how long we were out, on the 185th day. It would take away the uncertainty of parents saying, are we going on Saturdays? Do I have to really compete to count this online learning as a school day? What about April vacation? What the Commissioner did by doing this was he put a hard end date, no matter how long we're out, meaning, we may not go 180 days this year. We may go 160. I don't know what the count is at this point in time. But the point is, it allowed districts to be concerned about what was most important, safety first, making decisions about safety first, and then moving from there. And so I will tell you that our last day of school is June 22nd, 2020, and our last day of school for faculty and staff is June 23rd, 2020. There's a caveat to that. The school committee could vote to have school go through June 30. And I am not speaking for this committee, and I think there's so much uncertainty that I think we need to be very clear, that we are not looking to go to school through April vacation. I will also talk about the realities of what we see moving forward and what we've heard in these information sessions, but as of right now, it might be safe to come back on April 6th, go to school for two weeks, make sure everything's okay, and then go away for a week. I...people, I think their plans may have changed, but life is different. This is a one-of-a-kind situation that we've never experienced before, and I think people deserve clarity and direction more than they are worried about 180 days. And I think that's what the Commissioner did for us. So as of this point in time, our last school day for students is June 22nd, 2020, and our last day for faculty and staff is June 23rd, 2020, and that means that we wouldn't be going to schools on Saturdays at this point in time, and we wouldn't be going to school on April vacation. So that was the first piece that we communicated to the faculty and staff. I probably didn't communicate it clear enough. I did put in it, doing the math and understanding the fluidity of this situation. I am informing you that the 2019-20 school year will not be the traditional 180 days in duration. Based upon the information at hand, the last scheduled day of school for the Fairhaven Public Schools is June 22nd, 2020. That's what I communicated to faculty and staff on that Tuesday. Nutrition services. I am so proud, and the Commissioner keeps saying this across the board, and he's just a great person and sees the real picture. We have a moral imperative to do the right thing here. And we do not qualify for having over 50% of our students on free and reduced lunch, which means we will not get reimbursed, or would not get reimbursed with the current federal legislation, by providing lunches and breakfasts to students in need. We did it anyway. One of the first things we decided Monday morning. Mrs. Potter took it right away. Mrs. Kohler helped, and we announced to our principals that as of Wednesday morning, we would start, and our food service group is amazing. We had a coordinated plan, and I know some places, and I...everybody has to do this differently, and I wish them the best, but this was for Fairhaven. And on Wednesday morning, we put it out on Tuesday afternoon that we were doing this, on Wednesday, from 11:30 to 1, 11:30 to 1, we started giving a lunch and a breakfast for the next day. And the numbers that I have are 49 on Wednesday, 63 on Thursday, and 54 today. And that means that, and we had our police helping, our school resource, we called in a cafeteria worker to help, we asked some of our crossing guards if they wanted to be there at Route 6 and Cumberland Farms and School Street. We tried to get as many people as we could. What we need to do in this process is, we do need to track our usage of free and reduced and track our costs, because right now, we're doing this for all the right reasons, for the moral imperative, but right now, there's no guarantee we're going to get any reimbursement whatsoever. I think that's irrelevant, but I still think we need to protect ourselves if that becomes available. The Department of Ed, and again, being in these meetings, we have clearly stated that we're not a district with a 50% threshold. We're a district with a 30% threshold. We would like to be included, please, and that's a federal mandate. So individuals would have to make a change at the federal level, and we have people advocating on our behalf. We've also determined, as of this morning, because of a conference call with the Commissioner, I believe Mrs. Kohler and Mrs. Potter were looking at USDA area eligibility mappers to use census data to qualify a location where they can serve meals. And Mrs. Kohler, and I think I'm going to give this to the two of you for a second to just give us a story of what happened with nutrition.
Sure. We were really excited to launch it, but didn't know if we'd have eight people come or 80 people come. And our food service, I can't say enough about Felicia Connolly and her work and her team, but we were able to work with our custodial staff. We made them all wear gloves and masks and practice social distancing. One family could get out at a time to go up and get what they wanted for the day. We did track names for the purpose of possible reimbursement. But as of today, with the Commissioner's call, when we searched the map, properly from around here, the USDA, it does look like Hastings site does qualify, which means there are like daycares and stuff in the area that qualify. So we think we will qualify for some reimbursement. Actually, we found it out this afternoon, so that was really good news.
So we'll be completing that application next week and working with our Department of Ed liaison to get that in the works. So yes, we learned that this afternoon, which was exciting.
So we then had a meeting, and believe me, we have walked the talk with the safety and not letting people in the buildings. Our principals, we again had another Zoom meeting at 2:00 p.m. They were not allowed to get back into their buildings. Only the custodians were in the buildings. We conducted this outside of the middle school to maintain, again, first and foremost, the safety and well-being of our students, faculty, staff, and our community. That's how we handle things. They were not allowed back in their buildings. We've been doing everything remotely, and I'll get to that in a minute. Thursday, March 19th, we then, for the first time, and I did send a letter to the faculty and staff, and I will give a little timeline of this, and then we'll have to do something procedural and take a vote. Over and above teaching and learning, safety first, nutrition, Mrs. Kohler put it very well, it was the hierarchy of needs. We needed to make sure that everyone was safe first and foremost, and everyone continues to be safe. Next is, how can people be fed that need to be fed? And while we're developing education and protecting our staff and their anxiety and uncertainty, remember, we had communicated that we were dealing with four days, and we were getting ready to plan what would happen on that fifth day, which is today. So with that in mind, we also did a lot of background work in these conversations with state leaders, getting information, talking to different people about our faculty and staff. How can we keep them working remotely and also find a way to maintain, as all the recommendations are coming from across the board, maintain in which their pay would be where it is? And there's a lot of information out there in a lot of ways, but we knew that there's a right way to do this, and the governing board that makes decision on policy, and the only people who can make decision on policy is the school committee. So at this point in time, I think it's important that we decided to have a school committee meeting. The town canceled their meetings. We decided to have a school committee meeting and put it on the agenda for Wednesday, which was the proper posting, so that we could have this meeting today, so that we could take a couple of official votes, and then, from there, get back into a synopsis so we could educate the community on what's happened, but more importantly, what's going to happen and what we're doing. So I believe at this point in time, we'll probably move to making a motion and having the Chair explain something real quick.
Okay. So prior to this motion, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this portion of the meeting due to a known conflict, and I'm going to hand the meeting over to Ms. Keachler, who will chair the meeting until I return. Just kind of getting wind. You guys are awesome.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Keachler, before I ask you to read the motion and the committee to take a vote in the affirmative or not, this is...this has been vetted. We met at 2:30 today with our union FEA president. We have consulted with our town administrator. The motion is drafted by our legal counsel. We have been in consultation throughout the state in recommendations that are, if they haven't already been set forth, are coming down probably from the state level. This is all in accordance with those issues, and this is in regards to staff, work, and pay.
Okay. So maybe I'll call it. I will read the motion and then ask folks to move the motion. So the motion reads, move that during the period starting March 20th, 2020 to April 3rd... So the motion reads, move that during the period starting March twentieth, two thousand twenty to April third, two thousand twenty, inclusive or to such a later date as the governor of Massachusetts may determine for the continued closure of all public schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to COVID nineteen in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Hereafter referred to as the closure period. The Fairhaven School Committee, subject to appropriation, shall pay the regular wages for workdays during the closure period to each employee of the Fairhaven Public Schools, excluding day substitutes, provided that each such employee to be paid performs work they may be requested or required by the employee supervisor during each workday to be paid in the closure period. Nothing in this motion limits any rights that any employee may have to take vacation, sick, or personal leave during the closure period. So can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. We can go get Mr. Monroe. So I sent a, an email last night to faculty and staff. I purposefully sent it on Thursday, knowing that this was the last of the snow days, and there was a great deal of uncertainty regarding this situation as they came back on Friday. We said to individuals that we would contact them and give them more information on Friday. And we have sent communication regarding various issues to our faculty and staff on Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday. And I will get into in a minute, and Mrs. Kohler will get much deeper in a minute, into what happened today with our faculty and staff, starting to get the job done for our kids already, which is, I gave you the vision that we had Monday morning and wait till you hear what's starting to happen, but with a very measured way in, in doing it. So we get to Friday, March twentieth, and which is less than a week since we brought people in at three o'clock and told them what we were going to do, and even less than a week than the governor got up on Sunday. And this morning, had a conference call with the Commissioner of Education to receive more updates. And what I want to do is just give our school community and you some information on some questions that may be out there. Long-term outlook. I do not have the power, and from this point on, this is going to come from the governor or higher powers and whatever happens. The last power that I had was Friday afternoon to say that we'd be out for a week. And that got superseded on Sunday night. This crisis could abate and end on April third, and we're back to school on April sixth. This crisis could be extended. And just so information is that the current extension could go through April vacation. I do not have knowledge on any of this. I do have some common sense thoughts that I'll share with you, but please, people that are watching and people that are listening, I do not have knowledge on this, but I, let's try and figure this one out. Which means that after April vacation, would we come back after that? Would we come back on May first? Would we come back? In other words, that's an extended period of time beyond April sixth. Right now, grade three to eight MCAS would be canceled because it's within that time period. And we would have ceremonies to close out the year. There's also a point, and it's happened in some states, where a school could be closed for the rest of the year. So those are the three scenarios. April sixth, an extended period of time, through April vacation into May, or for the rest of the year. I do not have an answer for you. We asked the commissioner this morning that if we were to get an updated piece of information from the governor, please give us a week's lead time. This will also lead into what Mrs. Kohler's been doing, which is so exciting. But, so there's the long-term outlook. Three options. There's three options with MCAS. Why people in a time like this would worry about MCAS, but people do. So, which probably is an answer about MCAS in and of itself. Why is it such a priority when there are other things that should be a priority? The grade ten ELA MCAS has been postponed at this point in time. It will be rescheduled. This window of time that we're out through April third also covers the three eight ELA test. Here's the three scenarios with MCAS. There is a possibility that we could move testing windows, which we'd have to do. There's a possibility that we would reduce testing, and there's a possibility that we would suspend testing for the year. If we've come back from this traumatic experience and our concentration is on MCAS testing, I'm not buying it. I have no power or say on this, but if I'm in the room where I do, I'm going to say, let's get our kids back to school if and when we can safely, and let's get relationships with teachers and kids going, and let's get learning going, but let's forego for a year. If we can have no Stanley Cup one year and no World Series one year, I think we can go one year without an MCAS. So that is my editorial, but those are the three options regarding MCAS. The two thousand nineteen twenty calendar.
That was not me. I'm sorry.
I will just reiterate for those who don't, is that at this point in time, unless this committee chooses to, we will not be having school during April vacation. If this committee felt otherwise, but I think I know you well enough that let's be safe and let's get through this, and let's have people choose their lives and prioritize their calendars, and let's, let's give clear direction so people take stress off the table. There's enough stress going on in this issue. Let's give them clear direction. So the direction would be, we come back on April sixth. We have an extended period of time, and these are all decisions the governor of the Commonwealth would make, not this body. So that's on the April vacation thing and the end of the school year. Let me reiterate, June twenty second for students, June twenty third. And then from there, today, we had another Zoom meeting with our executive leadership team. As I said, we met with the president of the F E A, and we sit here today. Probably one of the most exciting things that have happened, and the two people sitting to my left have been amazing, amazing this week, and there have been so many people in our district who have stepped up to get things done, including, we need to have a shout out through this discussion at some point in time of the people in the audience right now. And, and I'm going to have both Mrs. Potter and Mrs. Kohler now start to go into detail of some of the things that we have planned or have done or will continue to plan. So, and then we'll come back to other questions that we hope can answer before we go to the open time. So Mrs. Kohler, Mrs. Potter, the floor is yours.
Okay. So as Dr. Baldwin said, we talked really right away about Maslow's first. So when we came in on the sixteenth, it was, so keep in mind, Dr. Baldwin called school, as you know, on Friday, late afternoon on the thirteenth. Before our first day of missing school at all, the governor then extended that to three weeks. So we knew kind of walking in the door, we had the four snow days to really prioritize what was important to our community. And as you know, through what Dr. Baldwin's already shared, we really felt that it was important to make sure that our kids had shelter, our kids had food, and that there was safety. We also very quickly learned that the governor was, you know, as you know, moving to all takeout. A lot of our parents and families who work in these different, you know, restaurant venues were all of a sudden unemployed. So we also knew that. So we do anticipate that the food needs are going to continue to increase. So we felt it was a major priority to set that in motion first before we even consider talking about teaching and learning. We did have a document going on in the background. We were dropping every cool resource we could find that would engage and make learning fun for kids. At the same time, we knew everyone's household was being impacted, not just from what it normally is impacted by, but also this new sense of norm for them, whether it was loss of a job or sick family member or whatever. So I want to just really say that upfront because, you know, I don't know about you, but with little kids, if you get a dump of about forty websites and you're navigating the fact that you don't have a job and you're having to figure out what to do with your kids with that information, it looks pretty, but it's not really going to do anything. So our goal right away has been to focus on the idea of connecting our community. Anyone who watches the news today can probably assume that this will go likely longer than the three weeks. I'm not a, I don't have a crystal ball, but that would be my guess. So as such, our plan started to kind of shift a little bit. They started to this like immediate plan of the first couple of weeks, those first eleven days that the commissioner, we were with him just on Wednesday before the school closure decision. And at that point, he said we wouldn't go more than one eighty-five and that these days, you know, couldn't be learning, actually. He said it can't look like school, quote unquote. It could just be resources to enhance sort of what kids are doing at home. So they were learning to fly the plane as it flew as well. So what happened was, on the very first day, we were off essentially for snow day typically. We had meetings right away. We had already been, and just so you guys know this town, I'm very impressed with just the organization of it. Friday, March sixth, we were actually in a meeting at the fire department with the whole emergency management team, already talking about this, which is kind of amazing. A week before the school closure and sort of this eruption of information, the town was already kind of putting things in motion as far as just paying attention. D P H has been great. Our lead nurse has been involved in every conference call and briefing us on everything. We were in meetings with her at times, and at other times, meetings were happening at the same time. She's been great at communicating to us the latest with them. The emergency board of selectmen meeting on that Friday, I feel like this has been two years of time, actually, that's gone on. So we entered that first day and had already talked about these, as Dr. Baldwin was talking about, these curriculum groups and these, you know, how are people going to meet? We quickly kind of determined there needed to be a short-term plan and a long-term plan. So our short-term plan, as you know, was to get the food up and running, was to have a plan to meet with faculty and staff on the first day they were technically in school again, which was today. So we've been having these meetings with the principals nonstop. Well, I think we bonded more through these, these phone calls. I don't, I can't say the word Zoom anymore. I've heard it too many times, but we actually used Google. We were having them try how to use Google Hangouts and things of this nature. But we've really kind of bonded in the last couple of days of focusing on, yes, that's what our kids need. You know, that's what our families need. We need to know that they're okay. We need to see if they need anything. We started there. For today, we knew we had a plan of meeting with our staff. So we had sent them an email early in the week, and then we sent them another email yesterday that informed them that today we'd be having this Google Hangout session. I can't thank the technology staff enough for the work they've done. First, having us already in the Google platform so that we could do a lot of this stuff. But then second, they even arranged for people to get devices so that they could be a part of the staff meeting. During that staff meeting, we had a script, so every principal shared the exact same message. It was informative. It had a lot of what Dr. Baldwin shared at his previous communication, just to reiterate it. But then it went into sort of the nuts and bolts of what now? The what now for the next two weeks that were definitely closed, we are asking teachers to give a positive message to their students. It's going to be either an email or a video. We're encouraging video if they have the capacity to do that at home. And basically, so that on a Monday, students will get some positive message from each of their teachers, if they have more than one, as well as something that will be for each content area, work maybe about an hour a week. So Mr. Muntz is probably going to be making workout videos and these kind of things. So our goal is for them to have this resource available. The trouble with that is you don't know if everybody has the same ability to access that information. So Erin Costa, who, by the way, thank God, we had her positioned through all this. I've been on the phone with her dictating a letter and then moving on to something else, and then it all happens by the end of the day. She helped create the survey for our families to fill out. We've had a thousand respondents so far. Our secretaries are now reaching out to the families who didn't fill it out, to fill it out for them. So we're really trying to understand what Fairhaven needs and not what every other community is trying to say they're doing. So I just want you to really know that, that we're trying to be supportive of who our kids and our families are and meet them where they are. It's a tremendously complicated situation. Of those families, ninety-nine percent of them who filled out the survey said emails are a really good way to get ahold of them. So the good news is for that percent of families, we know we're going to be able to push out an email on Monday and that their family is going to be able to see what's in that and work on it throughout the week. We're essentially giving families about eleven days worth of just staying connected to what they used to do. We really want them to lay eyes on their teachers, be connected. Going back to this whole Maslow's thing, you can't learn until you feel safe. And one of the ways we can help them feel safe is to be connected to their teachers and to hear from them and to know that they matter. So we're literally starting from that level for those two weeks. In the background, we have a website being developed. Erin's creating all of the sort of how it's going to work, and then Tracy Higgins and all the supervisors. Every supervisor and coach was on another conference call with us this afternoon. They are helping to work on creating the content for that. So our long-term plan is, should we go another few weeks or another rest of the year, that families would know, here is a landing page on our website. Go to the week, go to your content, and you'll see what needs to be done. We're hoping to have more direction at that time. The commissioner did tell us today that if it goes longer term, that he would be considering setting hours for school to happen. So we'd have to wait for information from him. So we have two things happening. One is a short-term connection plan, and one is this long-term week-to-week plan. A few of the people we talked to today in the staff meetings even said that their children's schools were sending boatloads of information, and they were just overwhelmed. And these are educators, and they were like, I have seen enough of these website dumps, and I don't know what's important, I don't know what's not important. So I would like you, I don't know if you can picture it as like a syllabus or something where you kind of get this weekly view of what is happening. We're also very keenly aware that the high school, because it's one-to-one, we're assessing, we're having the teachers assess who has connectivity at home. Because if they have connectivity at home, that can look more like school on the long-term than maybe some of the others might look traditionally. So we're trying to figure that out. The teachers are anticipating sending the correspondence on Monday through Google Classroom so that they can see who has checked in and got it to kind of understand who has that connectivity and who doesn't. I feel like I'm missing a whole bunch. I jotted down a bunch of thoughts. We're also talking about counseling services. I know Chris actually helped us think it out through an email, but we're trying to find a way that if this goes long-term, that our counselors could talk to kids and conduct sessions through the telephonically. And he referenced some sites that would be encrypted, that would be safe for us to continue that work. That sun is really something, but it's a good reminder, right? The sun will come out eventually. Today, the high school, again, we think that the two ends of the spectrum are really where people are going to be most elevated. That being like the little kids who the parents are sort of new to school and want to make sure they don't miss any traction. And then sort of this upper end here who like thinks college is coming up soon and doesn't know what's going to happen. So we're also keenly aware of the needs of those two groups and sort of everyone in between. So the high school coaches and supervisors and the principal, we met today just to talk about grading decisions, because the commissioner also mentioned that if this goes long-term, we can't necessarily still pull traditional grades. So that was something that kind of came up. So we did talk about the concept of credit or no credit. The idea that students can move to the next grade next year if for some reason we can't finish school this year. That we need to have a way to help them finish those credits and to have them have opportunities for credit recovery if they were in bad standing maybe before this started. So we had some really, really great conversation about that. It's funny, my husband has been, so I've been trying to work from home these last couple of days, and he sort of like hears this stuff happening. He's like, what is going on? And I said, imagine trying to take the structure of school and make it make sense to meet every family like at their house. Right? Not knowing what they have, what they don't have, what resources they have, what resources they don't have. So we're even talking about if you say design something, we talked about Lego activities. Well, not everybody has Ligos at home. So you can assign some cool ideas, but we have to be open-minded to how they're going to create those things, you know? So that's the stuff we're trying to filter through. Thank you, by the way. It helps. Only one of them. So yeah, we have a lot to do. We're trying to give our staff like a little bit of information at a time. So today, they're focused on what's happening on Monday. We communicated a letter to families tonight about what's been going on and what the plan is. Our number one objective is that all four principals communicate the same message in the same way to all faculty, staff, and families. And we're just meeting nonstop to try to get it right. staff, and families. And we're just meeting non-stop to try to get it right. We do have Google Forms out for all the staff at each school to submit their questions and thoughts so that we can also vet those during our Monday morning meeting, the principals and I. I feel like I missed something.
No, you didn't at all. And you can't imagine, I guess my question to you, playing facilitator here, is, tell me about the meetings with staff.
Oh.
What, what, what was the mindset, what happened in the meetings with staff?
Sure.
Because they happened today.
Yes. So we basically said to everyone, you need to log in at a certain time on a platform you've probably not used much, and you're going to have fifty of you on with your principal to get information. So every principal reported that their meetings went, I know you were in one live, so you could probably speak to it after, but they were just really positive. People were happy to see each other. They were like yelling, hi, you know? And so I think that's the point of our desire to keep people connected. Even our long-term plan, I actually missed speaking to this, but we're taught, we already are thinking out, you know, each week having a virtual field trip that, because there's so many out there, but to maybe have one be district-wide, like it's Museum Week and, you know, elementarys are doing this. And so we're trying to keep our kids' community connected as best we can through this time, so that they know that there's other, like they're still important to us in the school community. So we're even joking about things to engage high school students, like TikTok Tuesday, you know? But just to like have them see each other's faces and have them remember that we are still part of one big community, and someday this will be over and we'll all be back together, and hopefully you'll still have been connected in different ways. We're just having to try to think like kids right now.
So what we did Monday morning was, we said, okay, I'm going to make sure that things are happening and a lot of the stuff that we talked about. Mrs. Potter, anything that has to do with operations, it's your baby, you own it. Mrs. Kohler, anything that has to do with teaching and learning, you own it, go. And then what we do, and what we've been doing with our principals and our executive leadership team, is we bring it all together. Every afternoon, we share everything with each other. And what we're hoping to do is, it started small with three people Monday morning, bringing ideas together, and then we found a couple of friends to add to it on, with the executive leadership team. And then today, we found a whole bunch more friends, well, that's our faculty and staff. So it, you know, the sky's the limit, and yet, at the same time, I totally respect people don't need to be bombarded to say, look at what we did. This is not a competition. This is sensitivity to a community. And to say, we are here to support you, we are here to enhance you, we're here to provide you with resources, but we are not here to overwhelm you. So we're trying to do it in a very caring manner. And just the fact that our faculty and staff can reconnect with our kids, we think is going to make a lot of difference. Because I don't think everybody's expecting all of that. And so it's going to begin Monday. And we put some information out to parents today, so they're aware that something's coming. And now what we're doing is, it's not a perfect world, folks. Every time you do something, you find out twenty more things. Who isn't connected? What do we need to do? How do we get devices? If it's not devices and Wi-Fi, how do we help each and every? It's a, we know our district about all. So, but the intent is to get there. We have the ways and ideas to try and go slow for two weeks. This is no different than the four days of snow, in which you tried to put something out on the Friday, which is today, and now what do we do for two weeks in a smaller version so we can get all the kinks out, so we can really rev it up if we're extended. Mrs. Potter, you've been amazing on your end, from nutrition to finance to everything else. How can you share what you've lived in, feels like two years, but one week, Friday to Friday?
Sure. So I'd just like to touch base, so we always joke that they are Walt Disney and I am Roy, the brother of the practicality, like how we're going to get this done, what are the details. So I just want to touch base, back to food service, just in the event that.
That's kind of true.
It is. They're like global thinkers, and I'm like, okay, we need to do it. So I just want to touch base back onto food service. Just in the event that anybody watching this did not receive the messages about where they can pick up meals and things, but meals are being served from eleven-thirty to one at Elizabeth Hastings Middle School, Monday through Friday. The offerings are a variety of sandwiches from hand, turkey, tuna, chicken salad with chips and a fruit and milk. And then you can also get a breakfast for the next day, which includes cereal, yogurt, muffins, milk and a fruit as well. We've had a number of volunteers on social media saying they want to help and they want to donate and things like that, but we're trying to abide by the social distancing and we appreciate everybody's help. But at this time, I think that we have it covered with our wonderful staff. So we are in the process of creating a flyer to send out to families and post on social media with local restaurants that are also offering free meals. So we're hoping to have that out next week. We've also been in contact with our homeless families in sending that via mail where we know that they're living so that they're accessing that information as well. All of the food service information can be found on our website, which is fairhavenps.org. We'll be updating that regularly, along with social media and things like that. So I just wanted to really make sure that folks understand where to pick up that, that food if they're interested. In terms of technology, we keep joking that we've crammed a month's work into a week. Our staff is amazing. Chris Camara, Steve Rosa, Patrick Alveo, Craig Perry, Jess Illingsworth, and Erin Costa have been, have gone above and beyond, and they've been sanitizing devices all week, getting devices ready in the event we need to deploy them to students who don't have devices. This morning, we had staff pick up devices, social distancing, they weren't allowed in buildings, they were locked in vesticles. That went successfully. So now we're just trying to troubleshoot remotely if staff are having issues at home accessing the information or accessing the internet. So that's some, some things that we need to work out. We're also working on putting together a quick guide of internet access options that we know of, that are in the community with Xfinity and things like that. So we're putting together a punch list of, of items that we'll hopefully be sharing next week. The tech department has been very, very busy, along with the cable access crew, Derek and Eric here, working on the new public meeting protocol. So all public meetings will likely be held via Zoom and probably not even meeting in person in the future. So we've really, these poor guys, they've been troubleshooting that all week. And Whitney McCleese, the conservation agent, and Anne O'Brien at Town Hall have been working on the, the new protocol, which can also be found at fairhaven-ma.gov for those changes and updates as to what that looks like. As Mrs. Kohler mentioned, we did send out a survey to families assessing their level of need. So we'll be working with families based off the results of those. With social media, we're really trying to put out one message in a timely manner, but that's informative. So we're not just going to post multiple things a day just because people are anxious and they want the information. We're really trying to have a purposeful message behind it. So when we post something, people, people know that it's true, it's factual, and that's the direction that the district is moving in. So in terms of custodial services happening in the building, they are working to do a deep clean of all of our buildings. They've made significant progress this week. They have a few key areas to clean, but they are working through that. And just a note for you, we did temporarily close our playgrounds at the elementary schools. That was effective Wednesday. If you do drive by Wood School and you see some work happening to one of them, we're using this time to replace a couple of broken pieces. So, so that is happening right now. We're also working with a translation company to ensure that all of our communication is translated to our families' home languages. So we know that's important, so that we're getting all of the information out to every single one of our community members.
So, we haven't done much, and I, my twenty-year-old son gave me quite a revelation, because he's home, and I guess that's good. And he said, Dad, the last time this happened, what was it like? I was not around for the Spanish Flu in nineteen-eighteen. He thinks I was. So this is all brand-new. All you do is you take it, you process it, you look at your core values, and you say, what's right, what's morally correct, what's the best thing to do for all? Let's be measured, let's be guarded, let's not knee-jerk two nasty phone calls or one nasty comment. The silent majority get it, and they trust us, and we need to do our job. And our job is to lead. And leadership doesn't have answers all the time. Leadership takes time, leadership takes the ability to look deep and say, okay, let's do the right thing for all. So there are some issues that I'm going to just bring up briefly, that I can honestly tell you I don't have full answers on. And people are nervous about these little things because they concern them. And I get it, but I don't have a lot of answers. I'll give you the answers on the ones that I know, or option pitch it. And as we hear questions coming up soon, we're going to hear these questions and not give answers. I think we've given a lot of information, but we're going to take them down so we can get the right answers. And then we'll know what's out there and so forth. So here's, here's what's out there. Advanced placement is on a lot of people's minds. Mrs. Kohler, can you take that for a second?
Sure. We're working, we have a meeting scheduled on Monday about AP. Right now, we're under the impression through the AP and College Board that they're going to be holding those online. So we have a whole lot to learn about that before we send that messaging out. We are very on top of it. In fact, that was the number-one question of our high school educators today. So we'll be working with AP teachers, the College Board, and sort of finding out what next steps are. Obviously, it affects the entire country, as everyone is in a situation like this. So the good news is that we're not in this alone. At the same time, like we heard with MCAS, I'm wondering if it will end up being doable, and if it is, are there other ways we can accomplish it? So right now, we're hearing it's going to go online. But again, we should have more information after Monday. As soon as we know for sure, we're going to communicate it to our teachers so that they can communicate and build some study sessions with their students. That's sort of our thought right now.
So the next one, I'll just, Mr. Motta, this morning sent me a menu of the FHS counseling staff and who by each building, and we're talking about school social workers, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors. We're talking about school psychs. And in doing that, what's that?
Can I follow up with that when you're done?
Sure. All I'm going to tell you is, their first and foremost priority is the social, social, emotional health and wellbeing. He talked to me this morning about, they're already looking about ways to engage and deal with anxiety and deal with parents and just be all-encompassing for everyone. So they have their play in saying this. And then how they can be, how they can either reach out or be available to parents for other questions beyond the social, emotional health and wellbeing. So the counseling staff is starting to rev up and get active here as well. Again, starting with the hierarchy of needs, but then what are those needs that individual families call about and be responsive to them. So.
So we asked him to also build some resources to go on the website as well. So when they go into the COVID-nineteen sort of side of our page, our plan is to have the resources there for parents and kids for how to kind of manage stress and anxiety through this time, and then also wrap around services if they need a food pantry or anything like that. So people who might normally have not utilized some of those resources, who find themselves needing it, we're going to have a tab there, and that we have Bob Motta and his team working on.
So activities such as the drama production, athletics, spring athletics, my heart breaks because I know that's what people get so excited for each year. We don't have an answer on that. Right now, the MIA has officially pushed everything back to March thirtieth. That's the official word on that at this point in time. There are no other answers. I would say that I think it's important for parents to understand that this is not spring break in Florida. And while kids in the community are going to say, let's have a captain's lacrosse practice, let's have a baseball hitting clinic, that is not what should be happening right now. We're trying to, this is, these are unique times that are calling for unique measures. You know, me going for a walk and back by myself, keeping distance from everyone is one thing, but trying to do things all well-intended are not, is there a question on this one?
So just to clarify, the MIA originally said March thirtieth, they've now pushed it to April twenty-seventh, just to clarify.
That's fine, that's fine. So the, the prognosis, again, we're, hearing that and reading tea leaves means that, again, take the stress of April vacation off your plates, folks. It's pretty clear that while we're officially out three weeks, I would be floored if all of a sudden on April sixth, we were back and it was business as usual, if all of a sudden the MIA has decided it's deep into April as opposed to the March date. High school seniors. So first and foremost, it's credit recovery, it's those meeting competency determination. Because our high school does such a great job, there's not one senior who needs the MCAS in their senior year to pass to graduate, which is huge, because there are communities that aren't in that place. I don't have any answers on what's going on with graduation and junior day, et cetera. Let's just be patient, let's be optimistic. Our first goal, first and foremost, is to matriculate people and to get those counselors to contact families and kids who need credit recovery and make sure that they get the credits they need so they can be in line to graduate. I did have a conversation, we have not put anything out there, but there was a clear break, just so you're aware. There are three trimesters at the elementary level. We completed two full trimesters. So you could theoretically say, okay, we have two clear trimesters at an elementary level. But quite honestly, the, the permanent record doesn't start going until the high school level. The high school and middle school have been through two and one-half terms. So they just did progress reports for the half of the third term. So there are cutoff points if we had to, but those are on our radar screen. But again, there are no clear answers. Some will be given by those above us in situations like this, but I just want people to know they're on our radar screen. Athletics, medicine, there are families that might have medicine in buildings that they need them. We will make plans of a safe manner in which to get medical supplies or medicine to the families that need them. We will utilize our nurses for that. There are many others that I could go on and on about, but right now, there's one even practical for you. You have to do a motion that in these times, you are allowed to have one member sign off. So I don't know if we want to segue to that this minute as well.
So for Massachusetts law, this is basically, I'll just read this, what's underlined here, just so everyone understands what we're talking about. But this is Title VII, Chapter forty-one, Section forty-six, which covers warrants for payment of bills. One of the responsibilities of the school committee is all of us sign the warrants in order for the district to pay its bills. This is the Board of Selectmen, any other board or committee consisting of more than one member, authorized to expend money and designate any one of its members to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls, provided, however, that the members shall make available to the board, committee, or other department head at the first meeting following such action, a record of such actions. This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of a noncompliance with this section. Such approval shall be given only after an examination to determine that the charges are correct and that the goods, materials, or services charged for were ordered and that such goods and materials were delivered and that the services were actually rendered to or for the town, as the case may be, provided, however, that such approval may be given to any bill received from a state agency for the town's share of the costs of a federal urban planning assistance program established under the provisions of Section seven oh one of Public Law eighty-three dash five sixty, as amended before any goods, materials, or services ordered or to be ordered under such a program have been delivered or actually rendered, as the case may be. So given the unprecedented times that we're in, we, our next meeting may be done without anybody present physically. We may be all on the phone. So we will not be able to sign the warrants as we will only do. Therefore, given that it includes payroll, I'd like to make a motion that this body appoint Ms. Pamela Kiechler as our designated signee, so she will sign all of the warrants and payroll until this crisis is over. Can I have a motion? No, no, can I have someone make a?
Second.
All right. So all those in favor, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. All right, Dr. Baldwin.
Mr. Chair, I think, you know, just briefly, about special needs and student service Mr. Chair, I think, you know, just briefly about special needs and student services. Our special needs and student service teachers were in these meetings today. I talked to Mrs. Sullivan. There are plans being set forth as well there. Regarding day and residential schools, they make their own decisions. Those are not decisions that we make. When school's not in session, we're not required to have related services, but we are looking at ways that we can provide as much as we possibly can. Team meeting guidelines do allow for them to happen virtually. And sped directors are meeting with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed on Tuesday. And they'll be putting out a frequently asked question piece for not only sped directors but for special needs parents. And the last thing before I kick it over is, it's about equity. It's about districts that can. And so we're trying to be sensitive to all of our kids here in this district and not come out and say that we're offering school. We're offering the resources and the enhancement that we can, but to try and say that we're offering online courses like, you know, Harvard or UMass Amherst, we're not doing that. But we are going to do the best, and I, nor do I think we should be doing that. But we're doing the best that we can in the times that we have so that we can get our kids back as quick as they can. And that's something that we won't have the determination of, but we are going to continue to work on behalf of our kids and our community with the number one priority is to keep them safe.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for that extremely informative brief. It's quite a mountain that you guys have been climbing. And I can say, I think I speak for all of us when I say that, you know, and the community, greater community, that we're very appreciative of the work that's being done. And just, you know, ask that you continue to knock down walls and do what you're doing. And I mean, you're doing God's work. So thank you very much for everything that you guys have done to date in these unprecedented times. Our next meeting is going to be April 8th, 2020. The logistics of that meeting, I think, are still up in the air. We have a few weeks before that happens. One thing we will have to discuss is we do have to hold a public budget hearing at some point. And I imagine, given, I think this is, so far, I can see all the people that are logged into this meeting and we're going to, we will get to our public comment portion, but I think this has gone very well. So I feel comfortable in that we can have that hearing remotely if we need to and people will be able to participate if they want to. So we'll be in discussions about that. I don't, I'm not saying we're going to have it on April 8th. I think that's something where we'll have to figure that out and it's a possibility. So with that, I think now I'm going to move into the public comment portion of the meeting. As I said, per my discretion, I'm going to allow those who are going to go down the list. There are essentially 20 people on the call. If you don't want to ask a question, that's fine. When I call, I'm going to give the last four digits of your phone number so everyone doesn't have your number on the call. And so I will give you, you can ask a question. I am not going to guarantee we're going to have the answer to your question. So do not expect that we will provide you with the answers today. If it's an easy question, maybe we will, but I'm not going to promise anything. But we will, all of these things will be provided over time. I ask that you be respectful. As normal, this is a very difficult time for everyone. So I ask that you be respectful and you be patient with the answers that are given. And I'm going to give everyone two minutes. And so when I do recognize your phone number, I ask that you give your name and your address. So identify yourself and where you are from and where you live so we know who we're talking to. So let's, we're going to see how this goes and hopefully we'll be orderly and get through this unharmed. So the first, I'm just going to go right down the list. This is not number of priority. I have no idea who you are. This is like calling into a radio show. So the number, the first number on my list is, actually, I'll give the last five digits. It's 04588. So again, it's 04588. I'm about to unmute you. So you are now unmuted caller 04588. So what is your name and address, please?
My name is Drew Potters, 16 United Street, Bethesda, Mass. I don't actually have a question, I just wanted to listen to the conversation. I just want to thank you all for the hard work that you're putting in on this. So it's quite a mountain and you guys are doing great, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Potters. We miss you and we can't wait to see you again in the near future.
We can't wait to get back.
Stay safe. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next caller. The number is 75354. So again, I'm about to unmute 75354. Name and address, please. 75354.
I assume no question.
All right, so going once. So I'm assuming no question there. Going to go on to the next caller. This is 76553. So again, 76553. Do you have a question? And if so, what's your name and address?
No, I have no question. Michelle Souza, Jameson Street, Fairhaven. Just very proud to be able to work in this district and everything you guys are doing for the kids and us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, hope to see you again soon. Stay safe.
Oh, can't wait to get back.
Okay, moving to the next caller. It is 80757. 80757. You're unmuted. If you have a question, what's your name and address?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 13372. I am muted 13372. So if you have a question, what's your name and address?
Um, no questions. Time to both like 4283. Just want to thank everybody. No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one. Stay safe. Okay. Nope. There we go. The next one is 55233. So I'm unmuting 55233. So if you have a question, what's your name and address?
This is Scott Francis, 16 Gray Road, FBA president. And no questions, just as Dr. Baldwin already mentioned, I met with him, this is Kohler, this is Potter, today. Everything went smooth and how the information was distributed today was fantastic. And again, I think there are a few other people on the phone wishing to thank you all for your hard work and dedication to the district. And I would like to express that on behalf of every member that could have made phone calls, so.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. And we look forward to continuing and to working with you in a, under normal circumstances. And to you and yours, please stay safe and thanks for your assistance and your cooperation on all of this.
Thank you, Paul, thank you.
I think I did the wrong one there. Where'd you go? Okay, got it, sorry. Okay, next one is 05045, oh no, did I already, I think I already did that one, didn't I?
Yes. Sorry.
No, it changed the list.
The fact you remember that.
You know what, I thought if I went down the list, it would, it wouldn't change. It seems like it changed the order. All right, well, I'm going to, like I said, this is uncharted territory, so I already did 04588, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I did 80757.
Yes.
Right? Are you, you're right.
I have them down.
Oh, perfect. All right, so what, let's just.
I do a lot of raffles and I want to.
So let's just, I apologize, guys. This is the first time I've done this, so, you know, like I said, bear with me, patient. So let's just go down, you tell me if I already hit. 3, 13372.
Yes.
Okay, 55233.
Yes.
This one we just did. 75354.
Yes.
76553.
Yes.
Okay, 04588.
Yes.
Yep. 80757.
Yes.
Okay, 93257.
No.
All right, so that's the next one then. Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. So 93257, I'm about to unmute you. 93257, if you have questions, what's your name and address?
Amber Roderick, 44 Abel Blaine. I don't have any questions either. I was just wanting to listen in since everything was so unsure and everything was made very clear. So thank you guys for everything that you're doing.
Awesome, thank you very much. Stay safe. Okay. And then I did, so 93666?
No.
Okay, so 9, we're just supposed to change the order again. Oh, that's because someone dropped off, that's why. So it's, all right, I think they just dropped off, actually. All right, so I did 93257, so 63341 we did, we did, right? 63341, Dr. Baldwin?
63341.
63341, we have not done.
All right, so I'm going to unmute 63341. So 63341, if you have questions, what's your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Carol Tynan and I'm on 10 Green Street in Fairhaven. Just calling to be kept up to date on what's going on and thank you for all you're doing. And I just look forward to, you know, move transitions as we go forward in unknown waters. But thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tynan. And you and yours, please stay safe. All right, 97568, we have not done at all.
97, no, we have not.
All right, so 97568, I am unmuted here.
Hi, this is Renee Bradshaw, 6 Almy Street with her daughter Arden Bradshaw. We're just calling in to say thank you for all you do. And as a parent and a teacher in the district, I know this is very difficult and we're grateful for what you're doing for us. We really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradshaw. And hi, Arden.
Arden, it's a great surprise, hi. He's embarrassed, left the room.
Hope to see you on the softball field soon, Arden. Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks. Bye now.
All right, 55157?
55157 is not.
Okay, so I have unmuted 55157. If you have a question, name and address, please.
Hi, this is Paula Jordan, 16 Holly Avenue, Cushton. I call to listen in and to say thank you, especially now I have an assignment and I am so grateful to be working and doing something productive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. And thank you for, yeah, thank you for jumping on that, I appreciate it and stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, was it 97568 you did, right?
97568 is done, right.
Okay, so 019, 19040.
No.
Okay, so 19040, if you have a question, name and address, please.
Hi, Monica Landon, 20 Roundsville Street, New Bedford. No questions, just listening in and also thank you for just taking the time to do what is needed for our kids and our district.
Awesome, thank you, Mrs. Landon. Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right, and then 81237? Nope.
No.
All right, oops, that was, I think they just dropped off.
They're a good number of us here.
All right, so I think we hit everybody.
Okay.
I hope, should I redo? I don't know. All right, Bob, Dr.
You have 13 people, 13 numbers.
We're down to 13, so let's go through real quick. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure. What happened?
No.
Yeah, so I want to, I want to just go down, we, real quick, I just want to make sure I got everybody, that's all. All right, so 55157, we did, right?
Yes.
Okay, yep, 04588, we did. 75354.
Yes.
76553.
Yes.
80757.
Yes.
13372.
Bingo.
We didn't do that one?
No, we did.
Oh, all right.
Oh my gosh, don't change it.
Don't change the tone. All right, 55233.
Yes.
All right, 93257.
Yes.
Okay, and 63341.
Yes.
Okay, and then 97568.
Yes.
And then 19040.
Yes.
All right, we got everybody. All right, excellent. All right, so I'm just going to hit mute all just in case. Actually, that'll probably mute me too. I think I muted everybody.
Can we get, can we get you too? We could show everybody. All right, all right. Our, our, they're great, amazing. That's amazing that we just did that.
I think, so I'd like, I think, I believe everyone's questions were answered, I hope. I'd like to give this, I would like to give you guys, you're here, I appreciate everyone coming. I'd like to just give you an opportunity to say whatever you need to say. And so, Mr. Blaine, I'll go with you first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I think it was very informative and a lot of great information. And I think especially during these times, especially uncharted waters, and I think a lot of people are very anxious and don't know what to expect for the future. And, you know, for me, especially, I've been relying a lot on faith and, you know, with my church. And I think part of scripture that I like really, that stands out to me a lot is be still. And I think that's what all of us need to focus on, whether you're religious or you don't believe in God, but you just want to give good thoughts. I think all of us need to give good thoughts for everyone. And I think even for me, like just praying for people, especially our leaders, whether it's all of us or even our federal government and our state officials, I think being still and just relying on the process is something that all of us need to try to do, especially for our kids. So I think that's something that I've been trying to do a lot during these moments is to be still and to just focus on the present moment and to just trust the process and we'll get through it. I have faith in all three of you here, our leaders and especially, I mean, our TV crew, you guys have been awesome. The first time during the public comment, I was amazed just how fascinating technology is and our internet and innovation, so.
You're the young guy.
I know, and I'm the young guy, I know. But I just wanted to say thank you for just your leadership and promoting what's best for our district and our kids, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's been a stressful time, you know, for parents, and I know you recognize that. And I really appreciate the, the hard work you're doing to try to make it less stressful because it is, and it's, you know, stressful for everyone. Everyone is very fearful and, you know, to see steady leadership is calming. And if, you know, if we can provide that and you can provide that, then I'm really happy that we are, we're doing that as a district. I got two emails this afternoon, right before it came, from the middle school and the high school, very commonly worded and with some guidance. And so it's already started and I think that's great. And hopefully, you know, parents are going to start using some of that. I personally have tried to keep my kids not focused too much on school yet. I've read something about, you know, let's not make it traumatic. Let's try to ease them through this because it could easily get there. So I really want to be as conscious of that as possible. Kids are missing each other already. It's not like vacation. They're not able to see each other. And I got to say, from TJ, teenagers' point of view, it's all of our fault. It's every adult in the world, it's our fault. So we need to fix it. Or we'll have a lot of teenagers really coming for us, though. We'll be, yeah. But I'm really happy that we're able to do some things. And then if, keeping that in mind that they're missing each other, even though they're connecting this way, they really do, at least from what I see, have an impact of seeing each other and having that camaraderie of a classroom. So if there's any way we can do some zooming or whatever it is with the kids, I, that I think would be tremendously impactful to help them feel that community, not just through being, doing the same things, but seeing each other if that's possible. I think, and yeah, so thank you for all the work that you're doing and I really think that we'll get through this. And thank you.
Obviously, thank you. Really, really appreciate the way you attacked the priorities and the safety, security, food and how it all has to go from here to there. I've seen a few of those data dumps websites around districts and I think that that, that way is going to be so much more effective, like being able to go in and say, okay, this week, this is my syllabus as you described it, much more effective and more useful, I think, for parents and children. Being able to go in and say, okay, this week, this is my syllabus as you described it, much more effective and more useful, I think, for parents and children.
Thank you.
So just keep up the good work. There's no need to.
Thanks. Sleya.
Piggyback on everybody that's already spoke. Thank you all for all your hard work. I mean, it's great. I think the resources are really important. And instead of focusing on kids learning right now, they have to focus on what's really going on. And that's, that's huge. Just be safe. Take one day at a time. Don't kind of like, you know, I'm getting upset because I'm like, I'm feeling emotional right now. But I think that just take it one day at a time at this point is huge. And, you know, be safe. God bless everybody and let me know if you need anything. Thank you.
Mrs. Kiechler.
Well, you, you've said it a couple of times, that it felt, feels like the week's been a year or it's been two years. And I use that expression actually quite a few times in the last couple of days in my work as well. So I guess what I'll say about this whole thing is, you know, first of all, thanks. Everything that you presented today, it's, it's a, you know, a testament to this district about how, how, you know, truly resilient and great you all are and the folks that work here are, that we've made a complete shift in, in just the whole way we do everything. And we're gonna move into next week and we're gonna keep going and kids are gonna have opportunities and people are gonna be able to stay connected. You know, this is just such an unprecedented thing. And, you know, I think, you know, being patient, being open, I mean, appreciating the willingness of everybody, it sounds like, on the staff, to just embrace what it is that's, that's kind of happening, taking, you know, opportunities to provide a chance to, a perfect chance to innovate and to really, to really shine as we move forward. I think it's, it's tremendous. So last Friday, as this is kind of all starting ramp up, like last Friday night, I posted something and I, you know, I really feel like this is the opportunity to really be able to show how good we really are. And I think people are really rising to that occasion, both in the context of our work, but in the context of our community. And I think we have, you know, I, I see more people out and walking and being friendly and just trying to make sure that the connection is made, even though you're across the street. I think, you know, this effort to, to just, you know, be open, try our best to be still, take it one days at a time and to just truly show the goodness that we all have. This is giving us a chance to do that in ways that we never, ever could have imagined. And so keep it up. Know that we're here to be supportive of you guys and, and how much we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, guys.
I, you know, I think, you know, this power is, I certainly haven't rushed to get my kids onto an educational website or anything. We're certainly not the first generation to have to go through something. As Dr. Baldwin mentioned, the Spanish flu occurred in nineteen eighteen.
I'm serious.
And it was her fault.
He was there and it was his fault. You know, we had World War Two where, you know, many young men were sent overseas and, you know, Korea, Vietnam. There's been a lot of things that this country has gone through. You know, we had nine eleven, where actually when our seniors were born now, and now they're seniors in high school. So we faced adversity before and we will still be here when this is over. And I think in my mind, at least as a parent, as leaders, the, the greatest thing that we can teach our children right now is what to do in face adversity. And it's not to fall apart. It's not to, you can fall apart, just do it in the bathroom. You know, keep your game face on, be there for them. Because that's what they need right now. They need a calm during the storm. And so as a father, that's, that's my thoughts for the public is just stay the course and we'll get through this together. And we're all here for each other. And I, I can't thank you guys enough. So, Dr. Baldwin?
So, you know, to lead is to serve. Our job is to serve the greater good. We will make a thousand mistakes, but it won't be that our best intentions to deal with our people first comes first. And I think people need to trust us. And I hope they do, that we're gonna make a thousand mistakes. But we got this. We got this. We, we, we will be okay. And I guess I'll leave it with something that, Mr. Bueno, I wrote it down. I have behind, so you're talking about the generations. I have behind my desk in my office, something that was, I think it was my father's grandmother or my father's mother, but I think it was his grandmother, which means these are the dates and times you're talking about. And somehow I got it from their house and passed on to me. And it's the darn most true thing you'd ever want to have. And these guys know what it is because I say it seven times a week. But it says, "Today is the tomorrow that worried you yesterday and all is well." And, yeah, we'll be worried and we'll have anxiety. We'll have stuff that goes on. And Sunday we'll look back at this and we're gonna say, "And all is well." So we got this. Our best intentions are the right things. We're going to make a thousand one mistakes. But soon, not tomorrow, the next day, all will be well. And I think if we just all know that and do what's right, we're gonna be fine. And there's a very good chance we'll be not together at our next meeting. And that's okay. It'll probably be fun to look forward to seeing each other and the job that this crew has done. No, we've learned that people could take pictures with backgrounds. There's all kinds of things you can do on this. I've, I've learned. But we'll get through this. We'll get through this. And hopefully someday our kids say, remember that time? It was pretty funky, but I think I'm a little better for it because I learned what's most important in life. And it's not all the things, it's the people. And so that's what we're gonna focus on. So you guys were amazing, our tech crew and, and to pull that off. And Nikki Potter, first thing, my people are coming in and we're gonna get this done. And Derek from the town side.
They're so happy to hear that.
Well, well, the other thing is, I was in this, I've been here fifteen years and, you know, longer than Hector was a pup or whatever one of our future past members said. But we also have a relationship with the town now that never existed. It's like one. So when you go to a meeting with the town, it's a meeting with your school department. And for the longest time, we were the ones that were the ugly stepsister. And we really didn't, never wanted to be. And we really never were. And now with our town, it's one unit. And I think it functions a lot better that way. So I give kudos to, to Mr. Reese for all this and consultation and our, our town leaders. And we got this. We'll be all right. But it could be a little bumpy before we get there, but we'll be fine.
I got nothing to add tonight. So thank you guys for everything and stay safe. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.